Hello. Welcome to the 2012 Patterson School Board Election Candidates Reform, sponsored by Patterson Education Fund and Patterson NWAACP. I am Alvera Spencer, and I am a resident of Patterson as well as a PEF Board Member. I will be your moderator today. Working with me are Arlene Rosaria and Pamela Abladou-Daye. They will be asking the questions of the candidates. There are six candidates vying for three three-year term seats on the Board of Education. Four candidates are participating tonight. We regret that Ur Car would not be with us due to death in his family. Candidates, please take one minute to introduce yourself.
My name is Manny Martinez, Manny Martinez Jr. I'm a lifelong Patterson resident. My family has been in Patterson, serving the greater Patterson community for over forty years. I've been an elementary school teacher for the last six years, teaching at Public School Number Eleven, first grade, and then teaching at the Community Charter School of Patterson, second grade. I currently have transitioned out of the classroom from being a teacher to now running youth development programs in Patterson for the NJCDC, the Great Falls Youth Corps, and the Patterson Youth Council.
Thank you. Ms. Arlene?
Good evening. My name is Arlene Barcenas, and I am a proud Pattersonian. Born and raised in the city of Patterson, product of the school system. I attended Martin Luther King School, also proceeded to graduate from high school, Rosa Parks High School, then graduated from Rutgers University with a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice. I am very proud to have been, to be a servant of the city of Patterson for fifteen years. I've been in touch with my community, and I've also am a proud advocate of the educational system. I was a former admissions counselor at Berkeley College, where I enrolled many and hundreds of students within the Patterson and Passaic County region. So, not only did I live through some of the experiences as a student, but I've also lived it as being an administrator in the educational field. I'm also a previous and former legislative aide, so I do have an understanding of government and legislation, which is something that I think is important because of the fact that we are still under this local, and we don't have local control and still under the state power. So, once again, I'm very happy to be here tonight.
Thank you. Joelle?
Good evening. My name is Joelle Ramirez. I am Assistant Director of Admissions at Berkeley College, where I have served the greater Patterson area for the last nine years as a college administrator. I too am a product of, a proud product of the Patterson Public Schools Systems. I graduated from School Number Three. I actually went on to college after high school and obtained a Bachelor's of Science degree in marketing. I also possessing a Master's in Business Administration, concentrating in marketing. And my passion, even though my background's in business academically, my passion is for education. It is what I have worked in for the last eight to nine years of my life, serving thousands of students from our Patterson area and helping them understand the importance of obtaining higher education as a way of social upward mobility. So, I'm glad to be here tonight, and I hope to share some of the thoughts that I have about what the Patterson Public Schools District should be more like.
Thank you. Corey?
Yes, my name is Corey Lewis Teague. I am a native of Patterson, New Jersey. I was ordained as a minister in 1995 in the Highway Church of Christ. I am currently pastor of New Generation Healing and Deliverance Tabernacle. I currently serve as the Vice President of the Patterson Public Schools Early Childhood Advisory Council. I also serve on the Edward K. Patrick Homeschool. At this present time, I am a proud parent in the city of Patterson who decided two years ago to run for the Board of Education so that I can fight for the children in the Patterson School District, just as I have fought for my own two and will continue to fight for them. I am grateful for this opportunity. I am grateful to the citizens of Patterson for giving me this chance, and I do promise you that if you do give me this opportunity, I will work to the best of my ability to empower the parents and to make this a greater community in the city of Patterson. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Our audience can learn more about the candidates and the election issues in the PEF's Education Voters Guide, available on the PEF website, www.patterson-education.org, or by calling Let's move to the questions. All candidates will answer the same set of questions. Please limit your answers to two minutes.
Hello. Welcome. Manny, Governor Christie's education agenda includes the expansion of charter schools, vouchers, changing teachers' tenures rules, and using test scores to evaluate teachers. How do you think these strategies will impact Patterson children?
Okay. A lot of tiers to that question. So, I'll start with the first portion. You mentioned charter schools, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Having taught in a charter school, there's a lot of misconceptions that go around when people discuss charter schools. First thing I'd like to be very clear about is that charter schools are public schools. They are not private schools. Charter schools do not charge tuition, so they are, they are public schools. Lottery-based, so there's no kind of, you know, cherry picking or creaming the best students from different schools. I think charter schools can be very beneficial. I don't think charter schools are a magic bullet or the answer to problems, but I think they are very, very helpful. They can be very beneficial. Second part of the question was?
How do you think these strategies will impact Patterson children?
Well, you mentioned charter schools. There was something else?
Vouchers?
Vouchers. Vouchers is something that I am adamantly against. I don't think that students should be taking money, public school money, and applying it into private schools. So, as far as vouchers are concerned, not an advocate of vouchers at all. The next portion was?
Changing teachers' tenures.
Yeah, that's a slippery slope there, but I do feel that tenure, as it currently is, needs to be revisited and reworked. And, you know, as a former teacher, I can say, really, the only, the problem that I see with tenure is that it creates a level of comfort, and it's not for all teachers, but it creates a level of comfort. I can't think of any other industry where a person could work three years in a day and then be guaranteed employment. I think charter schools and teachers should be held to high, you know, it's really about accountability. If a charter school is not living up to what it's supposed to be doing, they should be held as accountable, if not more accountable, than your traditional public schools. But I think tenure is something that needs to be revisited. So, I think some of these initiatives that the governor are putting in place can be beneficial, but they really need to be thoroughly discussed and looked at appropriately before they're put into action.
All right. Thank you, Manny.
Thank you.
Arlene?
Yes, I'm definitely an advocate for public schools because I believe that public education is equal opportunity education for all children. Charter schools are great, however, they, not all of them are successful. Six percent of charter schools that are created nationwide, they fail within the two years that they launch off. Also, with charter schools, essentially, at the end of the day, they're run by private boards. So, most of ours are, I know how our Pattersonian parents are, I know how our community is. We like transparency. We like accountability. If we have something to say, we want to be able to go to the point person and make sure that it happens, that we get resolutions done. So, with charter schools, some of them are unique and have succeeded, but they're not the majority at the end of the day. And, and again, if there any parent needs transparency, they have to go through a board. Also, as far as vouchers, I'm not really pro, I'm not pro vouchers in the aspect that when it comes to charter schools and sometimes with vouchers, the money that is our tax money, which I know Pattersonians are very, very adamant about, our tax money will follow the students that go into the voucher system or into the charter school. So, at the end of the day, some of that money is being drained out of the, out of our public school system. So, once again, I'm a proud advocate of the public school systems, equal opportunity education for all. As far as teachers' tenureship, I also agree with my colleague. It should be revisited. I do believe it needs to be protected, but at the same time, there needs to be more meritocracy implemented into our system.
Thanks, Arlene. Joelle?
Okay. Well, again, I have mixed feelings about the charter school issue. I think it's so new to our minds and to our communities that we have not had an opportunity to really look into what they really do and what benefits they bring to the community. I, for once, do know, within people in my family who have attended some of the charter schools here in the city, that their life was completely changed from what they were experiencing in the public school system. So, maybe we need to revisit and see what these specific charter schools are doing that some of the public schools are not doing. I'm a huge advocate of the public school system, though. So, we definitely need to look at the bigger picture. One thing like Manny did say, they are public schools. The money is not really taken out of the public school system and put into the charter school. It's the money goes with the child. So, regardless of what school they attend, the money goes with that child. They're not going to be reducing the aid to a specific school just because that child's no longer there. So, that's one thing that needs to be considered. As far as vouchers, totally against it. I don't think that our tax dollars need to, should be going to people who want to go to any specific private school. I know a lot of us have different religious beliefs, and we want our kids in specific type of private schools with different religious beliefs. So, I don't think those tax dollars should really go to fund that type of thing. It should really stay in the public school system. As far as teachers' tenures, I must, I, like them, I have to agree. I work for a corporation. I am evaluated every six months. Why should teachers not be evaluated? And if I fail at my job and I can't provide numbers and statistics and percentages of how well I'm doing, then I don't have a job any longer, and I think definitely the public school system should be measured that way as well.
Thanks, Joelle. Corey?
Well, you know, speaking as a parent, one of the things I need to mention is that, you know, in my personal opinion, Governor Christie has been attacking, you know, the public school system since he's been in office. I don't think that he's really for the public school system. I don't think that he really cares about our children. This is my personal opinion. There are policies in place that he has right now where he's even cutting funding to individual schools. We already are dealing with low, you know, low grades within the classrooms and, and, you know, with him coming in there and wanting to make further cuts, you know, to the budget, I think that, you know, that it's detrimental to the teachers and to the students. I think at this point, we need to really think about re-electing a new governor, somebody who really cares about our children and who really cares about education in Patterson. I think that parents need to have a voice, and they need to come out more, and they need to speak out more about the things that they are concerned with in the public education system. Let me say this. Governor Christie, when I sent several letters to him when I was dealing with situations with my, with my child, with services that were being cut, and he pretty much had no concern about what was going on with my child. He really didn't care. And I can even show many of you the letters that he sent me. So, I really think that we, as parents, need to advocate to bring in a new system where, you know, the parents' voices and opinions can be heard and can be understood. Because let me tell you something, if they bring, you know, too many charter schools into our district, it's going to get to the point where I understand where there are some private companies and private organizations that may be asked to purchase some of the public school buildings and use them as their own conglomerate, as their, and just like a McDonald's or things of that nature. They bring them in, and they'll be able to do what they want. Because let me tell you something, even though it may be a lottery system as far as bringing children into those schools, charter schools can select who they want. Public schools have to take in the children from the district, but charter schools have that option. So, we need to revisit that whole situation.
Thanks, Corey. I'm going to start with Corey. We consistently hear that our schools need more parent participation. Too often, parents report that schools are not welcoming them. How should our schools engage parents as partners? What will you do on the board to work on this issue?
Okay. Well, currently, I serve as a member of the Patterson Passes Workshop, and we have an initiative on the table called Adopt a School. And briefly, that initiative is actually going to, the part that I'm in charge of, what I want to do is bring in the parents from the community and allow them to sit down with the teachers. And we need to put our issues on the table and try to figure out what it is that can be done to connect the parents and the teachers. Because in speaking with parents, I often hear that, you know, when I bring my child to school, back to school night, you know, the teacher talks down to me, or the teacher talks over my head and so forth, when in actuality, maybe they may not understand what the teacher's saying. And in some cases, there may be some teachers who may be frustrated because of the lack of parent involvement. So, one of the, one of the things that I'm going to do as serving on that board is connecting the parents and the teachers. And right now, we are working on neighborhood parent associations where in each neighborhood, the parents in that particular block or that particular neighborhood are going to meet on a quarterly basis, and we're going to sit down and we're going to find out what's happening within the district, because there are, there are many parents in the district. I think forty-five percent of the parents in the district that have children are single parents, and it's very hard for them to get to board meetings and things of that nature. But I don't think that that should be a hindrance for them to find out what's going on. So, I'm constructing neighborhood parent associations that can gather the information and bring it to the parents so that the parents can have that information and be able to have, any questions that they may have, they can address them to the teachers, and then I will also be sitting down with each teacher in the district and those who have concerns, because I already do it with the teachers of my children. And we'll sit down and we'll, we'll gather around the table and we'll try to come to a consensus about what could be done. Because I know that the teachers and the parents can work together. It's just that somebody has to get in there and be willing to work.
Thank you, Corey. Manuel?
There's, there's a lot of, in my opinion, there's a lot of simple strategies that can be implemented to help kind of correct the situation. And these are strategies that really don't cost any money. What it really costs is just, is your time and your, and your energy. So often, parents, you know, when, as a teacher, one of the first things I would always ask a parent when they came to the classroom, I would say to them, hey, listen, I'm going to be spending a lot of time with your child throughout the course of this year. Nothing like the amount of time you obviously spend with your child. So, tell me some of the things that you were doing at home that work for you, so I can implement those same strategies in the classroom, because it creates consistency. Okay? So, what's happening at home is now happening in the classroom. So, there's no confusion there for the child. It kind of boils down to, in my opinion, something as simple as developing a rapport with the students and the families. Far too often, parents get phone calls from teachers only when something bad has happened. How many times a parent gets that dreaded phone call during the middle of dinner, and the first question is, what did they do? Well, it doesn't have to be that the way. Teachers can be proactive in a sense of calling parents and saying, hey, listen, I wanted to call you to tell you something that your child did excellent today, something outstanding your child did. So, developing a rapport with them. And as teachers, you know, teachers having a better understanding of the environment in which these children come from is so helpful. It's been tremendously helpful to me as a classroom teacher, understanding where the kids come from, what their lives are like. Far too often, teachers have expressed to me, Manny, I don't understand how this child, why is he doing this? Why is she behaving this way? There's a disconnect, unfortunately, between a lot of the teachers in Patterson and the students that they teach. There's not, it's not reflective, you know, so the teachers. And again, it's not to say these are not quality teachers or they cannot do the job, but at the same time, it would go a long way in help, in helping the situation, if the teachers had a better understanding of the students that they were servicing, the families that they were servicing as well, and just developing a rapport. If it can be something as simple as a phone call, a running record that you keep with your teacher, a log that you send home, hey, I just wanted to let you know, this is what we did in class today. These are simple, effective things that we can start doing immediately that don't cost money.
Thank you, Manuel. Joelle?
Okay. Well, I definitely think that empowering the parent-teacher organizations is number one. A week ago, I was at a school near my house. I was invited to speak to the parent-teacher organization about college and scholarships and applying for financial aid, and for the students that were coming with the parents, to speak to them about the importance of a college education. And it was very sad to see the animosity going on between the principal and the parent teachers, where they didn't feel they were being empowered enough, where the principal had a responsibility, thirty, I got there earlier, the message didn't go out till 6:15. How can you expect the parents who actually know that this meeting is going to happen and where it's going to happen if you're not empowering these parent-teacher organizations and doing what you're supposed to be doing? And a number of things they were telling me, they were venting, that the principal at that school specifically does to minimize their time at the school and their involvement at the school. We, I think, need to look at that very closely. We need to make sure that our principals are empowering the parent-teacher organizations, because you know what? They're the ones who have the kids at home, who need to continue whatever's being taught in that classroom at home, and empowering these kids to stay focused and dedicated to their schoolwork. But if you see that the parent and the administration within that same school is not getting along and not communicating effectively, then our kids are going to fall through the crack. Our parents need to be involved with the administration. And again, the school's administration have to empower those parents and make them feel welcomed. And when they promise that they're going to do something to help them carry out their mission, they have to do that.
Thank you, Joelle. Arlene?
Thank you. I appreciate this question because I definitely believe that education starts home, and like the old adage says, it takes a village to raise a child. So, not only does it start at home, but it should branch off into different, into different realms and through different branches of our society and our community. Everyone should be held accountable. At the end of the day, our parents, our faith base pastors, our reverence, our teachers, our leaders, we should all be held accountable for our child's education. And parental involvement is very important. It raises a child's morale to see the parent involved in their sports, in their music classes, in their programs, in their arts, in their homework. It boosts their morale, their self-esteem. And parental involvement, also, sometimes there may be a hindrance because, let's face it, the city of Patterson is over fifty-two different nationalities. Perhaps some of the parents have a language barrier, and they're too afraid to, to come across and talk to the teachers or speak to some of the administrators. So, perhaps when there's the PTA meetings or back-to-school nights, we should have some bilingual individuals or administrators there online, right there on site, so they can help out our parents with the language barrier and communication barriers as well. We should have more forums. As a commissioner, I would definitely try to engage parents. As I have been an organizer for many years throughout the, throughout the city of Patterson and throughout the state in different endeavors that I've done, organize more forums, more workshops, get people involved through communal events, and also with our teachers. A lot of our teachers, let's face it, in the city of Patterson are not from the city of Patterson. So, maybe they need to reconnect again with, and learn how to have a little bit more empathy and a little bit more cultural awareness about the different nationalities and the different obstacles that perhaps our students are facing. But I do want to give some credit to a lot of the teachers because they're doing a great job, but again, we need to make sure that we're not being desensitized, we're not becoming numb. And I just want to also indicate that we do have some good things going on in Patterson. We have community schools such as School Four, Five, and Robert Clemente that are already engaging our parents.
Thank you, Arlene.
I'm going to start with Arlene. Once again, Governor Christie proposes to underfund our schools by ignoring the School Funding Reform Act. This year, Patterson will receive twenty-four million less than the formula calls for. What action should the board take to address this shortfall?
Definitely. Well, the board, again, should I, should the community be, elect me to be a commissioner? I would be a strong voice on the board. Essentially, at the end of the day, we, I cannot make all the answers or create all the answers. It's about working as a team with all the commissioners hand in hand and creating that cohesive and that collaborative voice that we need to be, be able to say our message and a strong statement to the governor out in Trenton. It's all based on working with our legislators, our elected officials, working with our superintendent, making sure that the commissioner, Surf, right now, knows where Patterson stands. So, at the end of the day, I want to give also kudos to the current board because they have been voicing their opinion. They have, because of their great strides that they've accomplished, they were able to get the attention of the current commissioner, Surf, to come to the city of Patterson and listen to our pleas that we do want to be able to obtain more allocation and appropriations for our budget, and not only that, but obtain local control as well, which we want to piece of the pie through governance. So, at the end of the day, it's all about working as a team, speaking to our current elected officials, our legislators, our teachers, our administrators, and being able to voice that out. Go down to Trenton and speak to, and speak on behalf of the city of Patterson and the parents as well. Writing letters to the governor itself. So, it's about, you know, working as a collaborative team, as a commissioner, and working our representatives and leaders as well.
Thanks, Arlene. Corey?
What I want to say is that the parents themselves need to mobilize. The governor is going to keep running over this district until the parents get together and go down there to his office and stand out there in front of his office and demand that he stop hurting our schools and hurting our children and the education in our district. You know, if he does not hear anything from the parents, he's not going to think anything really matters. Because see, right now, he doesn't really think that, that majority of the parents care about what happens as far as education in this city. That's why he's able to do the things that he does. He doesn't really, you know, so when he begins to see parents voice their concerns, when he begins to get letters and phone calls from parents saying, hello, my child goes to this school or that school, and when he starts getting hundreds and, and hundreds of letters, and when their phones start jamming up with calls from parents from the district saying that we're tired of you cutting the budget for the schools, we're tired of you hurting our, you know, public education in this city, we're tired of the things that you're doing, he's going to have to do something. You know, those, those public officials and those people in Trenton have to do what the people tell them to do. But what it is, is that parents feel as though they are powerless, that they just have to pretty much sit at home with the remote control, you know, sit on the phone and just pretty much ignore with, you know, ignore what's happening. But what I think parents need to do, they need to mobilize, they need to attend the meetings. And let me, let me, let me say this about the school board meetings. The location of those meetings is too far for those parents to reach. How come we can't have it at, you know, a central location where parents are able to get to? I think that, you know, if we're going to have school board meetings, we need to have them in a place where the parents can be able to reach so that they can voice their opinions, they can find out what's going on, they can ask questions. Even if they don't know what's really happening, if you ask questions, they have to answer them for you. And when they do that, you'll begin to learn more, and that will help you to advocate for your child. That's what it's about, advocating.
Thanks, Corey. Manny?
This is, this is really a very tough question to answer, but in my opinion, I'm not naive. Obviously, the money is a big port, is a big portion of this problem. The money will help us to, you know, to further advance, you know, the academic achievements of our students. But at the same time, it's not, it's not entirely a money problem in my situ, in my opinion. I think there are small things that we can do. It's more about how the money is being implemented and where it's being allocated. I think that goes a long way, a longer way. I mean, I agree with Corey in a sense that, you know, parental involvement, community involvement, flooding Trenton with phone calls, with letters, going down there. If we want, if we want people to hear us, we're going to have to make noise. And it's, and it's hard on families. You know, a lot of families in Patterson work two, three jobs. They have, have come home, take care of their families, and make sure that they're ready for the next day, so they don't have time to really, you know, get involved in these endeavors and go down to Trenton and things like that. But though, they certainly do help. They certainly do help. The money is a big portion. It plays a huge part of it. But again, I think there are other things that can be done. It's more about how we're spending the money and where the money's going and how it's being allocated that can, you know, give us a better return on our investment and yield better results, which is ultimately what we're looking for.
Thanks, Manny. Joelle?
Okay. Well, I definitely have to concur that it's about two things. Organizing, we do need to get organized as a community that when we see that fundamental programs are being underfunded, that we get out there and we lobby our legislators, because it's their job to go out to Trenton and get that money for us and put pressure on the governor and on the commissioner of education and so on and so forth. But it's also about evaluating. We have to evaluate where the waste is. As Manny said, it might not be a money problem. It's statistically proven that there are districts that have less money than, than we do and are doing much better. So, I think what we're not doing is using those resources, using those over five-hundred-and-forty million dollars to come into this district in what's in the best interest of our students. We definitely have to see where the money's going. We have to make sure that it's going to the programs that are actually benefiting our children, that it's actually fulfilling the needs of the ones that are at the bottom and also at the ones that are excelling but don't have programs to motivate them and to keep them engaged. So, it's definitely not necessarily a money problem. It's how the money's being used, definitely. And second part also, again, organizing. If we see that a program that we need is being underfunded and we can't get the money from eliminating waste somewhere, we then need to lobby our legislators to go out there.
Thanks, Joelle. I'm going to start with Arlene. PEF's Educated Voters Guide show a second year of absenteeism and latenesses by our current board members, excuse me. This year alone, board members had twenty-three public meetings in addition to monthly committee meetings.
meetings. Giving that to the school board is a volunteer unpaid position. Do you have time to truly participate? Please give an example of how you would adjust your schedule.
I definitely, everything that I have ever been a part of or collaborated in is, I definitely put my 100% into it and my passion and my heart into it. In actuality, last year, I ran as a candidate and by a small margin, I lost. But because my heart was into it last year, that's why I'm back again, because I definitely feel that I could make a difference for the city of Patterson. I believe that just how I was able to graduate and go into college, so can anyone else. The dream is attainable to all. And but, once again, we have to continue to increasing our graduation. We need to make sure that we obtain local control back. It's supposed to be ours, it is ours. We've been under the grip of and the yoke of Trenton for over 20 years, and the only way that this agenda can be pushed and move forward and progress in the city of Patterson is if I become a commissioner, if we become a commissioner, I become a commissioner and be able to attend all the board, the committee meetings, attend all the board meetings, because that's the only way that the work will be done. I currently work full-time, I'm involved, but I have 100% time to dedicate to the school board. Moreover, as far as my participation as a commissioner, I definitely feel that the only way that we could improve our NJQ SAC percentages and move closer to local control is if we have, we don't suffer the absenteeism, if we do work on our committees so we can improve the percentile rates that we have in each and every committee so we can improve our governance percentage as well, because it is ours. And in the last three assessments of the NJQ SAC, Patterson has performed over 80% high and over, so we should be able to obtain at least governance back.
Thank you, Arlene. Joel?
Well, you know, it's a serious issue because we will never obtain local control if our commissioners are not involved attending the committees, because it's great to go and show up to the board meetings, but a lot of the work is really done in committees, making the decisions and implementing things and bringing them back to the board and the superintendent in order to be able to enact those policies that are really going to move us forward. And we are definitely measured in that, in the attendance and things like that for the commissioners, and it affects, as Arlene said, our Q SAC scores and being able to obtain that local control. I have already made changes in my schedule. My administration already knows that this is something that I feel strongly about, that I have all of my mind and my heart is here to already serve. As I've served the higher education community for over nine years now, that I want to serve the Patterson community, and I've already blocked out the specific dates. I know Wednesdays is the board, the days that the board meets, so that's definitely without a question. I'm actually even looking into taking that day off. We spoke to my boss today to accommodate. And whatever committees I end up in, they understand that I have to make the changes to be able to be here and serve, because I'm not going to leave this board when I leave and for anybody to point a finger that I didn't do what I promised to do. So I've already had that conversation and I think that it's in the right direction to be able to be here in mind, body, and spirit.
Thank you, Joel. Manuel?
Well, I think adaptability is big. Obviously, you know, life is going to throw things at you and you might have to be scheduled to be somewhere, but you're just going to have to be able to adapt and accommodate, simply put. Clearing out portions of your week, you know, your committees and your regular Wednesday meetings is going to be obviously the starting point. You're going to have to allot that time to make it available for you to do, you know, the job at hand. But for a person like me individually, these are the kind of things, these are the discussions that I have with, you know, people in the community, with coworkers, with family and friends. So this is just an extension of what I've done, continue to have done naturally. Win or lose in this election, it's not going to stop me from doing what I've been doing. I'm going to continue to serve. I work with elementary school students and high school students on a daily basis. So again, this is just an extension. This is just another way that I can serve my community, and I look forward to the challenge. And that's exactly what it is. It is a challenge. I understand that they're very late meetings, sometimes they go late into the evening, and that's, it comes with the turf, and you have to come into that with that understanding and be accepting of it and be willing to deal with it and, you know, and roll up your sleeves and get the job done. And I'm ready for that.
Thank you, Manuel. Cory?
My schedule adjusted November 15th, 2005, when my daughter was born. Everything changed at that moment. You know, I realized that my time is not really my time anymore. Everything that I do is for my kids and for my family. And so I sat down and talked to my wife and talked to my daughter, and I say, you know, daddy's going to be pretty busy. And you know, my daughter would say, really? You're not going to be home? I said, no, I'm going to be out a lot. I mean, you have to understand, I mean, there's seven, I believe there's seven subcommittees on the Board of Education, which you'll be a member of all of them. You know, you'll be attending meetings, special sessions, different functions, community forums. So, you know, I would say that being a school board commissioner is a daily task. I don't think that there's ever a set schedule that you can have because you're always going to be busy, you're always going to be in meetings. And because, you know, I'm an advocate for children, I'm always going to be constantly going. There's not really going to be a downtime for me. I'm a full-time pastor, you know, so I have to allocate time between ministry and serving on the board, but I'm going to be able to merge those things together because, to me, education and serving God are the two greatest things a person can do. So I'm going to merge both of those things together, as I have been doing since my daughter's been born, since my son's been born. I've been very active in their lives. The teachers will tell you that, you know, sometimes I could be annoying because I'm there so many times. I'm in the classroom and they ask me, do you want a job here? Because I'm there so much. And, you know, this is not going to change that. I mean, I'm going to be one of those commissioners. If I'm elected, I'm going to be getting on people's nerves. I'm always going to be showing up at places because this is very serious to me, near and dear to my heart.
Thank you, Cory. We will now take questions.
We will now take questions from the audience.
Joel?
Yes?
I'm going to start with you, okay?
Okay.
What is your history with working with children in the city of Patterson?
Well, since I was in grammar school, I actually, there was a club that was, at most schools in the city at the time, and we're talking about 1995 to 98, I was part of the Future Teachers Club. And instead of going out for, when you used to go out on the playground, everybody went out to play, I used to tutor first grader. So I used to tutor Mrs. Abud and Mrs. Pinko's class in the trailers outside of school number three. So since, I've always had a passion for education and helping children, so I did that for five years almost. I used to come back also when I was a freshman in high school sometimes to help out. In high school, there was a child, there was a child care program also. I did what is called exploratory childcare at Passaic County Technical Institute, so I learned, again, different types of child development and, you know, how to help students at that young age. Then professionally, since I graduated college, I've been working in higher education. So I've been coming back to the district, I've been a liaison to the guidance community. I am a member of the New Jersey State School Counselors Association, and I've always been in the district of Patterson specifically. For the last year, I've been serving more Essex and Hudson County, but the Patterson district was my home for six and a half years. I was overseeing the academies throughout Patterson where I worked closely with the guidance counselors to assist them in getting the students ready to college and applying and financial aid as well as scholarships, and offering all kinds of seminars on the importance of college and, again, the importance of it for upward mobility from one socioeconomic strata to the next.
Thanks, Joel. Arlene?
Yes, well, I too, in my past younger, I was also volunteered in mentoring with reading because I do feel that reading is one of the core elements in progressing along with math as well, but I've done some mentorship in the past. Most recently, I've, I was admissions counselor over at Berkeley College for close to three years where I was actually empowering students and enrolling, getting them to understand the dream of higher education, that it improves your quality of life, that it empowers you and is an investment and not a liability. It serves as an asset and it's a legacy that you leave behind, not only to yourself but to your family and to your city as well, because it allows you to come back and give back to your community, which is what we should all emulate and which is something that I very strongly feel that education is the key to move forward. But also, I've, in having been able to shape and mold these young leaders through the admissions counselor, I've also been, most recently, am a member of the Multicultural Roundtable with the Patterson School Board Education System, because we still suffer in some of our high schools and in some of our grammar schools racial tension, and a lot of that is not conducive, is not allowing to have conducive and safe environments for our students to really get involved and really get into the trenches when it comes to their education. So currently, I'm involved with that as a member on that committee. I also am very proud that, back in October, I served as a guest lecturer for the First Valerie Girls Leadership Summit, where I was a guest lecturer with fifth and eighth grade students, speaking to them about career and entrepreneurship. Because I do believe that once you get education, you could break the chains of the system and be able to move ahead, move forward, and through education, you could get and obtain that quality of life that you're seeking, have that job, that employment that you need, and if you want to go ahead and open up your own business, you could do so. So I do believe in empowering one another through education and at the end of the day, employment as well.
Thanks, Arlene. Cory?
Yes, I began working with children about 15 years ago at the Boys and Girls Club with Mr. Charles Ferrer. A few years after that, I became a counselor at the Crossroads Ministry Center, which is a part of Madison Avenue Christian Reform Church. And one of the children there is a current commissioner on the board now, Mr. Chris Irving. So, you know, I'm very connected with the youth, you know, in this city. I served as a youth minister in the Greater Highway Deliverance Temple, which was in the fourth ward, a community that was heavily populated with young people. I had my own ministry then, which I have now. You know, when I was about 16 years old, in the high school I went to, Passaic County Technical Institute, I had a ministry team there, and we ministered to the children right in the cafeteria. I got in trouble for it a few times because of the separation of church and state, but we found ways to reach those young people. So for, you know, for the past 15 years, I've been working with young people in the community. Two years ago is when I actually got started with the school system with what happened with my daughter. And I understand, you know, that the sentiments of a lot of folks, they say there's some people who get involved once something happens to them. And, you know, sometimes that's the way it happens, but you know what? That's what got me, you know, more involved in what's taking place within our schools. And maybe that's what God allowed to happen, to cause my eyes to open, to let me know that as a parent, you know, you need to really keep your eyes open more so about what your child is learning, what's being taught to your child, and what's happening, you know, in the educational structure, you know, in your child's classroom and so forth. So from that day forward and after that ordeal, I have been constantly in the classroom with the children in both classes and constantly working with children in various centers throughout the city and various churches throughout the city. We've just started with the pastors workshop, an international youth initiative where we're reaching out to 23 churches in the city and the youth pastors in the city, and we meet one Saturday every month. And we're trying to construct and formulate plans to increase the youth departments in every church and connect them to their schools so that the young people in those schools can be connected to the churches and the churches can be connected to the schools and we can bring this community back together.
Thanks, Cory. Manny?
My involvement with young people, with students is ongoing. It's every day. It's what I've been doing for the last 10-plus years and it's what I'm going to continue to do, you know, when I leave here today. I've been a classroom teacher. I started out teaching at public school number 11. Very grateful to Ms. Santana, who gave me my first opportunity as a teacher. I taught first grade there, and then I transitioned to the Community Charter School of Patterson where I taught second grade. The lessons that I learned there were just invaluable. But again, you know, my involvement with students is ongoing and it's every day. The experience that has been given to me through my educational endeavors and my background, in my opinion, is of paramount importance on the Board of Education. Currently, there are nine members on the board, and only one of those members has any experience in the classroom or in education, Ms. Willam A. Taylor, and she's resigning. And by no way am I comparing myself to her because her experience is way beyond what I bring to the table. But if I can bring a fraction of what she's brought to the table in the sense of, you know, having been a student in Patterson Public Schools, but also having been a teacher in Patterson Public Schools, it's really allowed me to connect a lot of the dots to see what needs to be done on both ends. Other involvements, I've been, you know, assistant coaching now and, you know, for football teams and baseball teams for many years. One of my most impressionable people in my life has been one of my baseball coaches when I was growing up. He was one of the first people who actually took me aside outside of my family and told me that, you know, he believed in me, that he saw me as a leader, and what I do, others will emulate when I'm out on the field and when I'm off the field, and those words resonated so deeply in me. It touched me. For the first time, an adult outside of my family said something like that to me, and it was so impactful. And I look to be able to do that with my students that I reach out to every single day. Sometimes it's so subtle, it's just putting your arm on their shoulder and saying, hey, how are you? How's it going? Oftentimes, students just need that attention. They just want to be noticed. And if you can do those small things, they go such a long way. So again, my involvement is ongoing and it's every day.
Thanks, Manny.
I'm going to start with Joel. Why school, why school charters, excuse me, why should charter schools be allowed to take the money from the public school? What other ways would you suggest that the schools be funded?
Well, as we mentioned earlier, the charter schools receive their money by the enrollment in the school, so the money goes to that, with the child. So regardless of where the child goes, that money goes with them, so it's just the way that it's worked out, it's just the way that it is. Other ways of funding, I mean, that's something that the government will have to decide. Now, as we know, the governor is putting out all these charter schools and the ideas and the plans for them. You know, my main concern is the public schools and strengthening our public schools. I really don't think that our concern as a board is to control charter schools or to say who funds them or who doesn't fund them or how they should get their money. That's something that the state has always already laid out, and it's in the hands of the states. I don't think as a board or as a commissioner, I would have anything, any say in that.
Thank you, Joel. Manuel?
The question was again, can you repeat it, please?
Why should charter schools be allowed to take the money from the public schools? Is there another way that you can suggest the money could be funded?
Okay, first of all, I don't think charter schools should take money from any public schools, first and foremost. But again, we have, we must not lose sight of the fact that charter schools are public schools. They are servicing Patterson students. It's not like this money is coming into charter schools and then we're taking care of students in Clifton and Toto and Passaic. We are still servicing Patterson students and we cannot overlook that. Again, I don't think charter schools are the magic answer. I don't think charter schools are going to come into the place of traditional public schools and right those wrongs. Not, but I think, actually, I think charter schools should be held to higher standards than your traditional public schools. In Patterson, we currently have three charter schools, if I'm not mistaken, and if you look at the stats, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to perform better than your traditional public schools. So I don't by any means think that charter schools are the answer, but at the same time, they were created out of a need for parents who were not content with what their public schools were offering. So essentially, what charter schools are, are they're an option, they're an alternative for parents who seek a better educational opportunity for their children. I don't think they're the magic answers. I don't think charter schools should take over and everything should be run that way, absolutely not. I have a lot of faith in Patterson Public Schools, public schools in general, and the work that could be done there. But again, it comes down to, it's a matter of accountability, in my opinion. As far as other ways of funding schools, again, I don't, for me personally in Patterson, I don't think it's so much a money problem. The money is here. It's a matter of how the money is being spent and are we using it effectively? Are we allocating it to the right places, making sure that the money's being spent properly? I think if we look into that, it can go a much longer way into helping to right some of these wrongs.
Thank you, Manuel. Arlene?
Yes, I do believe that charter schools are taking away from public schools. At the end of the day, charter schools are tapping into our taxpayers' dollars, and you're draining our current Patterson Public School system. Like I said, Patterson Public Schools should be equal opportunity for all. When you create more charter schools, you start becoming and creating a two-tier level system in the city of Patterson. And let's be honest, charter schools do not give an equal opportunity or entrance when it comes to students with special needs in their education, students that need ESL as well. They're not, they are not participants of our charter school system. So at the end of the day, charter schools will reflect a higher performance rate, and then it just leaves the Patterson school system looking as if our students aren't being taught well, when indeed, there is good teaching that is being and taking place in our Patterson school system. So once again, it creates a two-tier system, and we do not need that. Moreover, why not put our money in our Patterson school system? We have schools that are 100 years old, some of them are, the classrooms are falling apart. We need new technology. Why not take that money that's being allocated, that's being taken away from our students, that's being moved over and transferred to charter school systems? Why not put it back into our Patterson school public system? We need to renovate our schools, we need to restructure them, we need to make sure that the boilers are fixed, that the students have upgraded technology as well. So why not put love back into where most of our children are, where we have bilingual students, where we have ESL students, where we have special need students, and let's stop creating two-tier systems here in Patterson. So I do believe as well that with charter schools, there is no transparency. The parents, if they have a problem, they need to go to a board. It's basically privatization at the end of the day, and we don't need that. We need transparency. At the end of the day, if a parent has a problem, they could come to the Board of Education, they could speak to their commissioners, and that's what commissioners are here for, for transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Cory?
Well, I mean, we have to look at the difference between charter schools and public schools. schools. Public schools have to adhere to strict regulations and laws by the state, whereas charter schools, they develop their own rules, their own regulations based on their own charter, from what I understand. And, you know, the greatest fear that I have is that if they're going to, they're going to, from what I understand, they plan on closing schools, closing a public school and reopening it as a charter school. And, you know, I'm still looking into that whole formality because if it's going the way that I think it's going, we're going to end up losing our Patterson Public School education as we see it. If they continue to close a public school, open it as a charter school, and close another public school and open it as a charter school, we need to really examine and try to figure out what's happening under the table here. Because as a parent, I'm not against, you know, children getting the best education they can get. But again, you know, I'm really leery about this whole thing with these private companies that may be coming in and buying, you know, buying the schools and, you know, opening up, you know, these schools as private charters under their own, you know, auspices, under their own control. I have a problem with that because it just doesn't seem like we're headed in the right direction as a state. You have a governor there who only wants to put money in his pocket and in the pockets of his cronies while allowing the public school system to be drained and bleated to death. And, you know, I think that we as parents, and I'm speaking as a parent again, we as parents need to really research and really get this down pat and understand what's happening to our district and really find out what's happening to public education in this city and across this state. Because, you know, to me, it seems like they're trying to privatize education. You know, they're trying to take it away and only allot it to the certain percentage of students that do the best. And I have no problem with giving credit to the students that are doing their best, but there are some students who need help, who need assistance, and those students shouldn't be left in the cold. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Cory. How important is it to maintain stability at the superintendent level? What do you know about some of the current initiatives of our current superintendent? What is your opinion on the current board of our superintendent and his initiatives? I will start with Manuel.
I think stability is of paramount importance to begin with. And there's been so many changes within the last couple of years, jumping from one superintendent to the next. And how can you expect to see any good results or any, you know, fruits of our labor coming through if every two or three years, we're switching superintendents, which means we're changing outlooks, we're changing direction, we're changing strategies? So stability is, it's very important, very important. As far as initiatives that Dr. Evans has in place, I know the innovation zone is something that he's been working on and I've been doing my homework. I still have a lot to learn. You know, I'm getting very familiar with a lot of the innovations and directions that he would like to take the district in. But the innovation zone seems to be something that's definitely a step in the right direction. Closing the gap, I think it's one in every three schools and one charter school would like to see drastic improvement, if I'm not mistaken about that. So, you know, I believe in what Superintendent Evans has been doing and I hope that he'll be around to continue his work. But stability is paramount importance. We cannot continue to jump from one to the next and expect, you know, to see any fruits of our labor really come to bear if we're constantly changing.
Thank you, Manuel. Cory?
Yeah, well, one of the initiatives that is near and dear to my heart is the community engagement. You know, being a community activist and being out there, you know, in the streets every day with the people, with the parents, is one of the things that I, you know, that I treasure about what Dr. Evans is trying to do. I think that we need to work a little harder at getting the community actually engaged and involved with what's happening in the public school system. Of course, everyone has their own opinion, but, you know, again, at the actual meetings themselves, the turnout, you know, when I go to the school board meetings, it's empty in there. You know, we have, we have, you know, close to 30,000 students and, you know, there should at least be 300 parents or 300 to 400 parents at those board meetings to sit and listen and really find out what's going on. Because again, if it doesn't look like the parents really, you know, care about what's happening, you know, and even though we know that there are parents who do, but when you don't see them there and you don't see them at the meetings and at the workshops and you don't see them, you know, involved and engaged, it sends a message that maybe the parents really are not too, you know, that either they really don't care about it or it's not really a big issue in their heart and in their life. But let me tell you something. Education should be the number one priority in every family in this city. You know, we know, I know personally, how hard life can be when you don't have, you know, a wall full of degrees and so forth. I know about that. So my children, my daughter, you know, her homework is number one. She doesn't sit in front of the TV all day. As a matter of fact, she only watches TV on the weekends. And a lot of people say that I'm mean for doing that, but you know what? I don't want my child growing up not educated. I don't want my child growing up not being able to do the things that she needs to do. As far as the board, you know, I don't really have any complaints, you know, personally about the board. I talk to each and every member, you know, but I do feel that, you know, that if you're going to have people on the board, they need to be people that are going to work with the board and need to understand that it's a committee and that, you know, not one person can do everything. They need to sit down and come to the table and make sure that everything, you know, is agreed upon.
Thank you, Cory. Arlene?
I do believe that stability is very key, very important. The city of Patterson, ever since we've been under the control of the state, we've suffered tremendously with instability, no longevity with our superintendents. Why? Because we do not have control over our schools. Why? Because we do not have the control of our governance, which is why it's very important that we obtain the local control back. So we could hire or fire our own superintendent. So we could determine, our own community, our own leaders, our own parents can determine how long our superintendent can stay. So it cannot be a revolving door the way it's been for the last 20 years. Our children have suffered for it and enough is enough. Our parents have suffered for it and enough is enough. At the end of the day, stability is very important. And the city of Patterson has gone through so many superintendents and jumping from ship, from one ship to the next. His initiatives, our current superintendent, his initiatives, I do commend him for some of the initiatives that he's implemented. He's reorganized school number six, school number 10. Since his, him coming on board with Patterson, we have community schools, which engage parents, students at the same time, such as school number four, school number five, the New Roberto Clemente School. As my colleague says, the Innovation Zone is another initiative that he did as well. We brought upon also the credit union that's been taking place and engaging students in Kennedy High School. We have four academies within JFK High School and Eastside High School as well. So the ambiance, the environment has changed as a result of some of his initiatives. He's also reorganized internally the HR department facilities and the finances departments as well. So some of his initiatives have been key, have been progressive. We want to keep the progress, but we need to make sure that we obtain at least governance on the local control level because we do not want to have a revolving door with our superintendents and our administrators. We want our own talent back in the city of Patterson.
Thank you, Arlene. Joelle?
Well, definitely, stability, I have to concur, is something extremely important. Having worked in corporate, I know that every time your vice president or your director quits or they let him or her go, there's that feeling that, oh my God, what are we going to do now? So everybody under that position feels challenged to actually get their job done. So we definitely, especially in education, which is a process, we definitely need to keep that stability to be able to move the initiatives forward, to be able that when a plan, when a strategic plan is put into place by one superintendent, that they don't leave while the plan is halfway through, because you're never going to see the good come out of that type of plan. When it comes to the initiatives, I definitely, again, have to commend him for everything that he has done thus far. I'm actually in the process of going through a packet that was mailed to me from his office regarding some of the initiatives going forward into this school year. I do have to, again, commend the breaking up of the high schools into the academies. You just walk through the halls and see how happy these kids are with the different uniforms and the name of their academies on their shirts. And they're learning different areas of expertise within one school. So it's like these learning cells that are going on over there and the kids are happy with that. And I think we're going in the right direction. But again, we have to keep that stability there so that we can see that whole strategic plan to fruition.
I'm going to start with Cory. In Patterson, one reason why the charter schools seem to excel is because they are family oriented. If elected, how can you go about helping our public school build a better relationship with the families?
Again, that goes back to the initiative that we have with the Patterson Pastors Workshop, the Adopt a School Initiative. And part of, part of my part or my position within that board is to create parent neighborhood associations where the parents are actually going to be sitting down with the teachers. I do plan to meet with, actually, I did have our first meeting yesterday, by the way. And I do plan to sit down and meet with teachers from the Patterson Public School District, which I have met with several of them. My main, my main goal is to bring the parents and the teachers on the same page. You know, it seems like an amazing feat, but I believe that it can be done. You know, I'm working with several of the pastors in this community and I keep making reference to the pastors because we need to bring, many of our children attend the churches in this city. And I believe that our pastors need to be more active with what's happening in education. And I've been bringing this to the forefront with them at the pastors, pastors meetings, and I'm going to continue to do so. Because we need to engage the schools and the parents and we need to, you know, sit down, I don't know, you know, if there's maybe, even if there's a church that would allow us to house a conference or a function where the parents and the teachers can sit in the same room and they can just air their grievances, discuss what they believe can be done on both ends. And I believe when we do that, we can begin to strengthen the school system as a whole. Because without communication, with a lack of communication, everything else breaks down. So that's where I believe it has to begin. We have to start from the bottom and work our way up. We have to start from ground zero.
Thanks, Cory. Manny?
Again, we're talking about something that there's no one answer for, but to me, community schools is the first thing that comes to mind. Community schools and learning to treat the child as a whole, holistic approach. You can't expect a child to come into a classroom ready to work and ready to learn if their personal needs are not met as well. You can't separate the two. If a child is not eating well and a child is not sleeping well, and these are direct ramifications of what's going on in their personal life at home, you cannot expect the child to come into the classroom and be ready to work. So how do you right that wrong? You treat the whole, okay? You make sure that the family needs are also being met to the extent to which you can. Simple initiatives through community schools, something as simple that I've seen in the charter school and also at School Five. Phenomenal work that they do of having a doctor in-house at the school. If a child gets sick, parent no longer has to leave work, miss a day, miss work, miss pay. That child is treated at the school, can get a prescription written for them right there. If the parent is sick or a sibling is sick, they can come into the school, get treated and checked by that physician as well. So you alleviate a lot of the problems that the parents are dealing with right there. Something as subtle as having a laundry machine, a washer and dryer in the school. Sometimes kids come to school out of uniform. Why? Because they didn't get to do the laundry the night before. Understandable. You keep a stack of fresh laundered clothes. They are available for them. And if a parent needs to come in and do a load of wash one day, it's available for them. So these are simple things that we can do to treat the child and the family as a whole. You can't separate one from the other. Again, if a child's individual personal needs are not being met, you can't expect them to perform academically in the classroom. So community schools and all of these things serve to help get parents involved, get them engaged, and you're helping them and you're helping yourself.
Thanks, Manny. Arlene?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. In Patterson, one reason why the charter schools seem to excel is because they are family oriented. If elected, how can you go about helping our public schools build a better relationships with the families?
Well, I understand that there's only three charter schools in the city of Patterson. The schools that tend to engage a lot of our parents and our children at the same time are the community schools, which are public schools, which is schools number four, five, the New Roberto Clemente. Those are the schools that are really engaging our community as a whole. I do agree with my colleague. They do have in-house doctors. They do have other services where it's more interactive for both the family and the children as well. But once again, I mean, the charter schools that we have in Patterson are only three. And I think, I believe that the community schools, which are public schools, are actually on the right track and they're, they're actually really engaging the parents and it's more of a collective and collaborative effort as a whole. As a commissioner, I just think if I were to become a commissioner, it's about parental involvement, getting our, as an organizer myself, getting the faith-based groups together, getting the teachers involved again, and making it more of a community-based approach. And I think everyone should be empowered at the end of the day, whether it's parents obtaining a little bit more knowledge in some of the classes that their students, their children are actually acquiring, or whether it's giving some of our teachers some workshops as well. But at the end of the day, I believe that our Patterson schools are doing a good job. And with the community schools, they have a clear vision of integrating both the community and the parents and the children as well. And those are our schools, four, five, and Roberto Clemente.
Thanks, Arlene. Joelle?
Okay, well, definitely, again, empowering the parent-teacher organizations at the individual schools, facilitating things to them like use of technology for communication amongst the parents and the administration at the schools, bringing in speakers to actually teach the, the teachers who are not from our community about the different issues that the kids are facing, that the parents are facing. Give them a demographic map of the socioeconomic page of Patterson and where our students and our parents come from and what are the obstacles they have to confront on a daily basis. And definitely, again, empowering those parent-teacher organizations to bring in and create different workshops for parents to be able to assist their children and to become more involved in the education of their children. And again, as Arlene had mentioned earlier, bring in people who speak the language. You know, we have a huge Bengali community. We have a huge Latino community. We have a huge Arabic community. We need to get more people who are academically prepared, who speak their languages, who understand their culture, to be able to communicate with the parents and communicate with each of these communities' leaders, that it is important that they resonate the message that the parents need to be involved, that here in the United States, that here in the city of Patterson, the parents need to get involved to be able to help their children, to be able to move up in that socioeconomic status by completing their education. The importance of graduating not only grammar school but high school and going on to college. We need to have these organizations. We need to have these parent-teacher organizations that are empowered to offer our parents and the students the tools to be able to work together for the common, that common goal, which is graduating our students, getting them to college, and hopefully staying in Patterson to move our community forward.
Thanks, Joelle.
On behalf of the Patterson Education Fund, thanks to all our viewers for watching. Don't forget to vote on Tuesday, April 17. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.